Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Hall Budget Session, Wednesday, November 17th. Call to order at 6:06 PM. We stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have quorum and proof of service. Steve? President Cootie here. Vice President Spooner.
President.
Director Conway. Vice President Palmer.
Here.
Vice President Stevens. Vice President Reinhardt. And Stow told me she wasn't going to make it. So we do have a quorum. So we'll move on to the business at hand. That's the 2022 budget discussions and the adoption of same this evening if the board is satisfied with where we're at in the process. Bill, will you take it from here?
I sent each of you a PDF copy of the budget as we left it last time. I did find one error in that. Line number four, 0066, gate strikes, which is income, which is what we would be budgeting to collect from offenders who hit our gates. You had me change the number. And I've changed it on my schedule, but it didn't change it. My formulas were looking at the wrong cell. So I didn't change it except in the first cell. So I fixed that. So instead of reading 11,500, it reads the 6,000 that you wanted it to read, $500 a month. And that should be what you got. So that. And the only other correction I've made is Melanie requested we fix line number 41041. That was just rounding, where we put it in the first month and he copied it out for 11 more months. And it came out $8,004. She asked that we fix that to be just even dollars. So we changed one month in it, took it down $4, so we're treating $8,000 now.
That's 41040.
Yeah, 41040.
Right.
So now we're looking to you to tell us if there's any changes you want to make to this before we send it to the community.
All of them up to the board members. We've all had time to review this. And thank you, Bill, for sending this out. And thank you to the Finance Committee. Did a yeoman's job on putting this together. And the board appreciates your efforts. Ron?
There are two items that I did want to mention that I've got in mind, that there was going to be escalation clause invoked by Down to Earth last week. It's based on a Consumer Price Index based at Tampa. And that's basically what they go by. I haven't gotten that final number yet. There was also a few areas of dispute in the contract. Their contract predated Crawford's contract. When we looked at Crawford's contract, we noticed that the contract was very vague in what areas of responsibility Crawford had for the community. And so one of the things we changed was to make sure that we had a map that was keyed appropriately, so there could be no question or no ambiguity when it comes to what they're responsible for. Unfortunately, with Down to Earth, their contract predated Crawford's. And there are a few areas of, which they claim are quasi-common areas, that they're currently taken care of or are not being taken care of, that they want to get compensated for. I've asked for a hard number on that. This was just recently brought to my attention after addressing a number of residential complaints about areas that weren't being taken care of. So we sat down, went over a map, went over the contract. I would like to make sure that the residents are getting everything that they're paying for, and they're not in a position where they're dealing with areas that are not included in the contract. Unfortunately, at this point, I don't have a hard number. I will have that, and I would imagine Monday or Tuesday, which is the best I can do. There is also an area for the common grounds for Crawford that they have. Last year, we, I believe, approved about $65,000 in extra landscaping for them. Since Allison did such a wonderful job in stretching that amount, it is significantly reduced this year. But there are still areas of the community that suffer from dead grass and need plant replacements. And so they've submitted a number of proposals over the course of the past three months. I've asked them to consolidate those proposals and then put them, frankly, for us to evaluate, which I can circulate. So those are the two items that unfortunately this budget doesn't reflect. It's not from a lack of effort. It's just from a lack of information up until this point. But I can get you that information quickly. I don't think it's going to have a material effect on the budget. But these are numbers that are of consequence.
If they're not material numbers, we do have $120,000 contingency in there. Would that be adequate to cover that issue?
It would be adequate with one caveat, is that the money that goes out for Down to Earth has to come in in the form of income. So as long as that doesn't have any...
I'm talking about Crawford. I'm not talking about Down to Earth.
Yes, that is way above the proposals.
I wouldn't use all of it.
Significantly above.
$120,000, I would think, would be a material number, so we're not talking anywhere near that.
Not, I said of consequence and material impact in relation to a new $100,000 budget.
For Down to Earth, if you were to anticipate, are we assuming the CPI to be around 3%?
This is a, this year, this is a true anomaly in terms of Consumer Price Index. I can...
If we worked, if we then assumed a 3% increase, put that in the budget, if we do get it in time, we can make a reduction. I just hate to have an increase after tonight.
Well, the problem you're talking about is this is revenue, too. This is, those people are...
Lot of it's a wash.
I know, but you can't change what they're paying in. You can't change your assessment.
Okay. But the assessment's not going to take place until two weeks after we make the announcement, correct?
Once we approve your budget, you've approved the assessments and you have to have...
You're saying it cannot be changed?
That you'd have to have a special meeting and it'd be like a special assessment to change the budget.
Between the time, now and the time of the meeting, between in the 14-day period?
Yeah.
You cannot change it?
No. Because when you noted the 14-day period, you send this out. And if you change it, then you've got to start another 14-day period.
Jason, Steve? Would you be able to free up some time on Monday to meet with me for an hour? We could even do it via Zoom. And then we can hammer out these final numbers. I want to make sure, because all the information from Down to Earth and Crawford flowed towards management, and it comes to me on a secondary basis. In response, I've asked them to consolidate some numbers, but I haven't seen them yet. And I want to make sure that all the information you have is consistent with what I have, so we can present the proper number.
Can you tell them? No, we're talking...
Is Down to Earth willing to negotiate it all based off their contract and lack of service this year? Or poor service, I should say?
Well, this is a board decision, frankly. All I can tell you is that it was communicated to me, that is what they're requesting. I'm not into negotiations, so I'd rather not speculate whether there's movement. Of course, I'm always going to point out the reasons why they do not deserve an increase.
Right. Just in good faith, where they have acknowledged that those issues and that they're making changes and they're trying to improve. I know it would be baked into their contract, but if they would value us as a client.
I don't consider it. There have been significant issues that need to be addressed in our...
It's just going to be very challenging.
What are the consequences of setting your budget now and have that number changed in six months due to a new Down to Earth contract? What happens?
We're going to have to change the revenue, frankly.
We would actually then have to change the assessment. We must be, I mean, the quarterly dues for those people in the sections that have landscaping.
Correct.
But we've done that before, in midstream, in mid-year.
No.
Yes, we have.
I wasn't aware of that ever occurring. And frankly, it is a unique situation because those residents are receiving services that other residents, and it's, and they pay for those services on a dollar-for-dollar basis. It can't be supplemented through a contingency. But we're talking about a couple days here. We're talking about having the final number by Monday. So what we can do is send out the final budget on Monday or Tuesday. I don't believe that will have an impact on anything.
Will that move your December 1st meeting back to December 3rd, 4th? You'd have to move the November meeting back, or have a special meeting after, I mean, to approve it. But if you look at the budget as it was presented to you and compare the 2022 that's been presented to the 2021, it's about up, it's up by about 3%.
And that is the elephant in the room, so to speak. And that there's, no offense, Steve, but there's been virtually no communication on the origin of that number, despite two workshops. And I appreciate you being here, Steve, and this is not directed towards you, but I have asked where these numbers are coming from. Typically, you have a situation where the management will meet with different committees, and those committees would submit wish lists, and those wish lists get submitted for the budget. And then we discuss those on an item-for-item basis, and that just has not occurred. And the last thing I want to do is go into next year ill-prepared and ever put us in a situation where we don't have the funds to meet our needs. It's not fair to residents. I wish we had more information. It's easy for me to just say, yeah, pass it. I don't care. I'm likely not going to be here on the board next year. But I'm not going to do that. I find that irresponsible. So I could try to move this up till, frankly, tomorrow, if you would. I can really give an earnest effort, take some time out of my day to meet with Steve, so we can get a hard number for you, and that may solve the issue. But I don't want to guess, frankly.
We've never gone through this process without the general manager sitting here. So when you ask that question, you could get that answer at this table. This year, we don't have a general manager here. She prepared that number. She did put 3% inflation in there, but, you know, she's not here to answer that question.
Right. And so, again, I'm not throwing darts. I'm just dealing with what the situation is. And it sounds like Steve's definitely willing to meet with me, and we're going to go over the numbers. And I'll email you about a time for tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I should expect.
Okay. And I'll make sure that happens on my end. I'll clear up about an hour or so.
Well, then, can we have the board give us consensus that once we finish tonight and we've approved everything, whatever changes that Ron and Steve come up with tomorrow for landscaping Down to Earth, both in revenue and in expenses, can be changed and sent out to the homeowners without having another meeting to have you agree to it at that point?
If he can exchange it goes, and still goes out by email to the residents tomorrow, we can still vote on it on December 1st.
What I'm saying is, when you approve what we've got here tonight to go to the residents, they may be changing that tomorrow. So will you, will you reach consensus that those changes should be included in whatever we send out? Or do we need to meet a second time for you to discuss that?
I would recommend, if I can type up here, we approved the budget subject to, and with one line item for Down to Earth, and we can, I can circulate that tomorrow.
Well, it's a dozen line items, because every street has its own line item.
Okay. Well, all the Down to Earth line items, and we can do unanimous consent tomorrow, and then we can send out the budget. So everyone's aware, you're not just signing off on an unknown number. I think that would make the board a little bit more comfortable, rather than just trusting, hey, hopefully Ron didn't screw it up.
So you're asking that we make those changes, send it to the board members to give unanimous consent for us to send it out?
Correct.
Does the board agree with that?
I am.
And in terms of the Crawford landscaping, I've requested that we deal with that on the contingency basis, the contingency fund and on a contingency basis.
Is there a way to get a number on that, Ron?
Because, I mean, I just, I'm a big believer that contingency should be used for contingency. And if we could get a number, then it needs to be a line item expense and an income number.
Yeah. Hopefully, we can get that taken care of tomorrow also. I need to confirm Crawford's contract numbers anyway to make sure they're consistent with what we have here. So we could certainly do that also.
You understand where I'm going, is that I think that contingency needs to be used in the last-case scenario and used for exactly what it's for. And if we can get to a line item on what the expense is, that's probably the best.
I've been working to build that contingency. And I created the contingency for a long time, so I'm not comfortable with it yet. I would rather deal with it dollar-for-dollar basis. So that's not a problem.
And as a point of reference, the Consumer Price Index is 2.5 as of October. The scary part is that the inflation rate is 6.2%, which is the highest in 31 years.
Yes.
So prices are going up. They're not going down.
And it is fair to note that, you know, for whatever reason, my mother doesn't seem to understand this, but she thinks that if things go up by 1%, why are they going up? But in reality, and based on our economy and what things are run, that's actually a reduced rate compared to what your inflationary rate is. So I would caution everyone to look at the full picture, not only any potential increases, but relative to current economic conditions with regards to inflation. I told her her, I told her that Social Security went up by 5.8...
Yeah, almost 6, 5. something.
She didn't have a problem with that.
But Medicare is what she pays. That's her premium.
Right. Okay. I appreciate your patience on those two numbers. I am trying hard to make sure that we get the correct numbers, and I will be spending time with Steve tomorrow.
Sorry, the Down to Earth ones, that's all the different streets, right? The line items for Down to Earth is all the different streets. How is Crawford broken out in there? Because that's not just one line item, is it?
Crawford's just in the contract section. It's in, they have different lines for different items.
Right.
Is the Browns' contract, is that 600?
The 386,000 is Crawford's contract.
Yeah, the 2020 budget for that item was 390. And we, 2021 was 386,400, and again, we have 386,28. So that's not, that's not been bumped.
It may have been, that may not have been the contract in previous years. They may have put a little slush in there, and it may have tightened down to the real contract. Because you've got to remember, it went from Sean to Jerry to Casey, so...
This contract was Jerry to Casey. This contract was Jerry to Casey.
Okay. If it kills up 3%, that would be roughly $11,000.
Any other board comments? Ron, would you want to make that in a motion to approve the budget subject to?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Unless, does anyone else have any more comments on the budget? Are we good to go? This is our third budget workshop. I know we put some time into it, giving the residents an opportunity to speak also. So subject to any more comments, that I would move to adopt this budget with the one caveat of approving the number for Crawford and Down to Earth tomorrow, the email, and have that represented on the final budget that will be sent out to the community.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Todd.
I think you probably should note in that, that this budget reflects 70.76, a $534.54 per quarter assessment to the Master Homeowner Association with an additional $370.76 per quarter to the people who have Down to Earth landscaping.
Right. Which is less than we paid last year.
And it's good to point out that we really did, as a board, try to make sure that whatever you were paying for cable was refunded, and not just at a one-time basis, but in perpetuity until we change and go to another bulk agreement, which is obviously a process and won't be thrown at anybody. In addition to that, it sounds like the annual budget has decreased in terms of assessments. An additional, let's see, so we're looking at $27?
It's about $75 for TV. It's just about that reduction.
Okay.
It may be up $2 other than the 75. Do you want to leave it an odd number like that, or would you rather change it to some even number like that? Last year, we upped it to $600 just to make it even.
Is anybody paying with cash?
Nothing I'm aware of, but that...
I don't personally care.
Well, they have to remember $534.54.
If you make, if you make it 540...
I wouldn't push going 540, but I was thinking 535, just to round the dollar out.
That's, would you?
People got upset talking $5 and $6 last year. That's the week, the $6 was only like a dollar and a half rounding.
So 46 cents is not so bad?
No.
It's important, though, if we are rounding, we round up, not down in terms of a dollar. I mean...
Even that, this number is going to change, because whatever you find out tomorrow is going to impact this number as well.
It may.
Because not the Down to Earth, but the Crawford.
Why don't we just vote to round it up to the nearest dollar?
If you did round it up to 40, that would be a $31,000 cushion.
For contingency.
You could increase the contingency by that amount.
And again, contingency, we're not near where we should be. We should have about two months of operating expense, and we're not near that. It's just something that wasn't previously discussed in the past. The city, I think, proceeds on two, two or two and a half months minimum contingency. And it's just for a worst-case scenario and situations that pop up, so you're not giving residents an assessment. And to me, that's a real failure of a board to, you know, people are planning what their budgets are every year, and all of a sudden, they get a $100 assessment. Now, it's just frankly, poor planning. So the contingency is also designed to take care of that. So I don't necessarily have a problem with having some lofty goals when it comes to building up that contingency.
From the construction, the extra money that was left over from construction and furnishings and stuff, did that go into contingency? Who added that in?
No. Last year's board voted that any money that was left over after all of the construction costs were covered would go into reserves.
See eye to eye on that.
Ron thinks it's anything under the budget.
So let me just clarify my position on this, in that...
So our subject...
No, we had this back and forth. I believe that after the construction was fully funded, the remainder was to go into this reserve account. There are still items that we need to accomplish with this construction budget. We still have lighting. We still have artwork. We need to put courts and fix up the entry desk to make it more updated. So there are items that we are going to need to pay for. And so rather than distributing that money out to reserve, I think, is premature at best. And even if there are remaining funds, I don't think they're best served going to reserves. And I don't think that was ever the agreement, but I'm happy to disagree with you.
There is still unexpendited budget amounts to cover what you're talking about. So we're not talking about the same dollars. I'm talking about the dollars over the budgeted amounts, which would cut, the budgeted amounts will take care of what you're talking about.
We're on the same page there.
Okay. Because that's kind of my question is of like, we still have to buy the outdoor furniture and pay for all of that. None of that's coming out of these numbers of this budget. Like, okay, that's still a separate amount that's still allotted for that. Okay.
Tom, do you have a comment?
As you started to talk, I started to remind myself, there are things, and I don't know what you still have yet planned, Ron, but I know from using the building, there are issues that people are looking for fans to be able to circulate stuff there. One of the components that we wanted to do when we built this building is to get our off-site storage onsite. So that's another $5,000 into next year's budget. I don't know if there's a way to incorporate something aesthetically pleasing, but yet get our off-site back onsite. So those are one of the goals over there. We are very limited in this building with storage, so something might have to do that. And if there's anything, and I'm not an engineer, that can improve the sound quality in this particular event, or if it's paint, or it's, I don't know what it is, if it exists, but something that makes this more accommodating. One of our poker tables decided to leave the building because the sound was so bad.
You could suspend things from the ceiling, soft things from the ceiling.
And you could actually add some cushion there are, if you'll see in the divider, there are soundproofing that you can put on there, basically some, something that's a soft surface that will absorb. So there are some options there, and I've already been in discussion about some options. Okay. Just letting know that it is a significant concern. I had a lot of emails on it, and it's something that we're going to work on. Point order.
Comments, questions? Gentlemen?
As I understand it, you have reached consensus that the document you were sent with the two corrections that I told you about, well, one, the document you were sent had one of the corrections, the other one is the $4. That is the budget you have approved to be sent to the homeowners with the only changes being the numbers that Ron and Steve discover tomorrow for number one, Crawford landscaping, and number two, Down to Earth landscaping. And with those changes, these numbers are ready to go to the homeowners with a notification that this is your proposed budget for 2022. Is that correct?
I know we need to go out tomorrow after, so the quicker you can get them, Ron, the...
Falls in your court.
I'll send an email, Steve.
Comment. Ron started chewing on the process of the budget early on, involving committee chairs, involving general manager. We've been without both of those. The direction for the committee chairs to come and work with the fans committee would come from you. I don't know that we can ask them to come in. That's your process.
Agree that if anyone has authority between your committee and our committee, it would be ours. But generally, when you draft a budget initially, those numbers need to come from someplace. And those numbers are directly a result of communication from management, directly to each head of the committees, and directly with our vendors. How are we to know what their escalat, whether they're invoking their escalation clauses or not? clauses or not? So there has been some frustration on our part, and I'm sure on your part, nobody likes to be, you know, flying blind here, and I think we are a bit, and so I certainly agree with you that this is certainly not on your end. You guys have done everything you can to help guide us, so I don't want to make, I want to be crystal clear here, that certainly not on your lack of attention to detail, and if that was communicated by me, it was not intentional.
Hold on a moment. No one in favor? All right. Opposed, none? The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll adjourn to the open forum, is anybody else, some commentary?
Good evening, guys, thank you for your service here and your oversight. One thing that kind of has been a sticking point to me for a long time is, if we have a shortfall in revenue because people aren't paying some of their Homeowners Association dues, I would like to know what we can do about that so that we don't end up with a increase in our payments to the HOA. Instead, what can we do to go after some of that money? Things, for example, like have Down to Earth not mow their yard. You know, let's bring some pressure that won't cost us a lot of money and see what we can get out of it before we go to, like, legal stuff, but I don't know what the extent of the collections is right now, but I suspect it's significant, I don't know, can anybody actually point to what that is?
Bill mentioned that number at our last board meeting, it's over $100,000, I believe. It has increased in the past year, and we have taken some steps previously. If you were over $1,000, we would start to, the process of suspending your access to amenities, to gates. What we did was, we lowered that amount to $500. Therefore, if you owe $500 or more, you have to go through the guest entrance, which is not an easy task, frankly. Also, you're not allowed into the pool, your ID card will not be working, so you will not be able to enjoy amenities. It's a very good point that you raised, if you're getting landscaping services, that collectively, all the folks that pay for landscaping are having to pay for you. And it's something I don't think this board has considered, whether we suspend those services, whether that's a good idea or a bad idea, whether residents, so that is another option. But I think the goal is to exhaust every option we can prior to incurring legal fees. Part of the process is that when we're considering these legal fees, if a home goes into foreclosure, there's a statutory cap on what we can recover of 1%. Therefore, in those situations and during the downtimes, we have to be very strategic in how we collect that money. But I think this board has been motivated to make sure that residents are aware that they need to pay their dues and make it as difficult as possible for them. But I think bringing those examples up of, like, landscaping is a good idea, and I would be all ears on what else we can do.
It might be a little difficult to implement, because I know, I watched the Down to Earth guys, when they mow, they just, they just mow everything on the street, and there would have to be like a little blacklist published every week.
They can do it, there are homes that do not, that request their shrubs not to be cut, and so it is an option. Now, the downside of that is residents may be frustrated that they have a poor-looking house in their community, and so it's kind of a balance, and it would have to be something the board would have to discuss, but it's a topic to at least address, and it's a good one, I think.
Thank you. Any pressure you can bring to bear to those people...
Absolutely.
...who are not paying their dues would be appreciated.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
May I, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Okay. The motion, accept the motion to adjourn?
So move.
You're adjourned.